June 3rd. We are going to see how far we get, fingers crossed. The first motion we have is actually a motion to defer articles 38 and 39 until Monday. I will let you know that if in fact we get to reach those, we will continue tonight, but otherwise there's been a motion to refer them until or defer them until Monday. I need a, that's by Ms. Brown. I need a second for that motion. It's been seconded. Okay, we will now have a vote. It's a majority vote. Let's go. Hi, Ms. McNally. How are you and what do you vote? Was my mic on?
Ms. McNally abstaining. I don't know what we're voting on.
Thank you. Okay, we have the motion passes to defer listening to 38 and 39. Listening is the wrong word, debating. 138, no, wrong. 131, yes. Is it 34, 24, no? 24, no, and 15 abstentions. Okay, 23, no, 15 abstentions. I think I indicated last night and then emailed that to show just how good my math skills are, but let's pretend I didn't send that out. Anyway. Mr. Burstein, what can I do for you tonight?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Michael Burstein, Precinct 12. I hope this is a question of privilege. I just wanted to clarify something you said before. We just voted to defer these two articles to Monday night, but just before the vote, you said something that sounded like you said that if we get to these articles tonight, we were still gonna do them tonight. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah. If we go through all the other articles, thank you for clarifying. If we go through all of the other articles so that which all, so it means if we get through 19, 20, 23, 34, 35, 36, the next ones would be 38 and 39. So if we get to them tonight, we will have a rescission of the vote to hear them on Monday. So then we will do 39, 38, 39, and 40. I hope that is clear. Okay, so that motion passed. We will deal with that as the evening goes on. So now we are going to hear articles 19 and 20 and a motion to refer. They will all be debated together. All of these relate to newly proposed marijuana regulation in Brookline. Article 19 would be a change to the general bylaws. It is found on 19-15. It is proposed by Mr. Green and seconded by Mr. Rudeho, and I apologize, but Article 20 is a change to the zoning bylaws. The main motion for that is page 20-29. It is brought by Mr. Rudeho and seconded by Mr. Green. A motion to refer to a moderator's committee has been filed by Ms. Park and seconded by Ms. Albuquerque. It can be found on supplement two, page one. So, like I said, we will first, we're gonna debate them all together and then we'll vote. Okay, Mr. Green, as the mover of Article 19 and seconder of 20, could you please start us off with the debate?
Good evening, Madam Moderator. I'm Bernard Green, speaking for a unanimous select board, urging favorable action on one Article 19 and one Article 20 as amended. Since I haven't actually seen the motion to refer, I'm not gonna address that. Let me start by describing what we're trying to accomplish with these articles in plain, simple English as requested by one prominent advisory committee member. First, we are updating our town's cannabis bylaws to include regulation of two new license types recently allowed by the Cannabis Control Commission, what I'll call now on the commission. Second, we are providing a quick and easy way for the town to encourage and incentivize entrepreneurs of color to obtain a courier or delivery operator license and take advantage of equity incentives of the commission. And third, we are trying to avoid having only outside businesses delivering cannabis and cannabis accessories to Brookline residents without regulation by the town or the town receiving tax revenues from such deliveries. Advisory Committee Member Carlos Rudeho will elaborate on this important point. These warrant articles amend the town's general bylaws and zoning bylaws to align them with updated regulations of the commission. They also make various technical amendments, including the two new licenses being subject to the cap that other cannabis businesses are subject to, i.e. four licenses in each category. The two new cannabis licenses are first a marijuana delivery operator license for an establishment with no storefront presence that sells and delivers cannabis and cannabis products directly to consumers utilizing an online platform and a local warehouse like Amazon. Second, a marijuana courier license for a business that does not sell directly to consumers but partners with cannabis establishments and makes deliveries of product to their customers, called in our outdated bylaws, "delivery-only marijuana retailers." The new commission regulations reserve these two license types to social equity program participants and economic empowerment applicants for a three-year period. These equity incentives are designed to facilitate participation in the cannabis industry by people from communities that have previously been disproportionately harmed by marijuana prohibition and enforcement and to positively impact those communities. The social equity program is a training-type program for potential cannabis entrepreneurs to develop their capacity to successfully open a cannabis business of any type. Certified Economic Empowerment Priority applicants are given priority consideration based on meeting three out of six criteria related to the disproportionate impact of cannibalists cannabis. Criminalization on certain communities are based on being black, Hispanic, or Latin individuals. To further facilitate the opening of these businesses, the advisory committee and the select board agreed to reduce the parking requirements originally proposed by the planning department for delivery operators so that business operations such as loading, parking, and storage of materials, equipment, and commercial vehicles are not required to be within an enclosed building. There are no parking requirements for couriers who can park their vans anywhere and in any town. Town meeting and the select board have been harshly and unjustifiably criticized for not having a sufficiently robust set-aside program for entrepreneurs of color from the start. Of course, it is easy three years later to say what we should have or could have done without considering the complexity of what we were trying to do at the time with little guidance or experience in this new and federally illegal business and with a town and a town meeting that was not 100% on board. I'll let others go further down that rabbit hole if they desire to do so, but today these programs can provide entrepreneurs of color irrespective of whether they live in Brookline with a priority path into a lucrative segment of the cannabis industry and with the possibility of expanding to other areas from there. The select board believes that these licenses will help further the town's overall goals of equity and inclusion in our business sector. So a unanimous select board voted favorable action both on one Article 19 and one Article 20 as amended by the advisory committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We now hear from Mr., actually, we hear from Ms. Park relating to the motion for referral. You have three minutes, Ms. Park.
Thank you. Could I have my slides, please? Are my slides coming?
On their way.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Susan Park, town meeting member from Precinct 2. I am also the Remote Learning Academy PTO Chair. Colleagues, would you please lend me your ears to why these warrant articles are not ready? And a referral of 19 and 20 to a moderator's committee is a smart choice. Next slide. It has been said that if we don't vote in these warrant articles now, there will be no caps on couriers and delivery operators, and there could be a lot more, so we better do this now. When I spoke to town council, I was told that this is actually untested. At advisory committee's meeting, we were reminded that this is a gray area. So a few extra months of studying these will be beneficial, especially since we heard Dr. Fernandez last night mention a possibility of two additional marijuana storefront retailers. This study committee is timely to reassess the goals of the town regarding cannabis. As the landscape of cannabis continues to change in Brookline, it's high time to study these bylaws in a moderator's committee. Next slide. Referring these articles to a moderator's committee would allow the committee to study the number of delivery and operator licenses and zoning that works best in Brookline. Is eight a good number? We want to get this right. Next slide. Brookline's health commissioner, Dr. Jett, said he has not supported increased access. So what is the right number of couriers and operators for the town of Brookline? A study would help us determine this. Next slide, please. A study would also help understand why the social equity piece is not happening here in Brookline as mentioned by Dr. Fernandez last night. Since though initially it sounded great and Brookliners were counting on opportunities with cannabis businesses, the social equity marijuana balls have been dropped. Robert Corey, a litigation lawyer in Colorado, says in his op-ed on April 9th that the people who are hoping for these opportunities are instead the same people that are being prosecuted because of cannabis. They tend to be poor racial minorities or recent immigrants. Here in Brookline, we found out that the courier system wouldn't even be available to Brookliners who have lived here longer than five years. Another reason for a study committee is to examine safely with the delivery system. Each delivery vehicle will have $10,000 cap of cannabis products. As with FedEx and Amazon, things can be stolen. We need a protocol for the security of the driver and the town itself. Next slide, please. And lastly, on page 19-20 of the combined reports at section 8.37-34, it says that the marijuana licenses will be rounded up to a whole number, a higher license number. In the event the license number ends up being a fraction. In other words, the eight new licenses could actually be higher. Next slide, please. More time will help us get these warrant articles right. Please vote yes on the referral to a moderator's study committee and no on 19 and 20. Thank you.
Thank you. We now call on Mr. Rudeho. Mr. Rudeho? R-I-D, are you? I can spell it. I can't pronounce it.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is difficult to pronounce, so don't worry about it. This is Carlos Rudeho, a town meeting member, Precinct 14, speaking on behalf of the advisory committee. As introduced by a select board member, Green, Articles 19 and 20 seek to update the town's bylaw to reflect recent changes made by the Commonwealth Cannabis Control Commission. These changes go aloud for new, for two new types of licenses, the marijuana delivery operator and the marijuana courier. The warrant article, warrant article 19 amends the town general bylaws and warrant article 20 amends the Brookline zoning bylaw. It's important to note that if either of these articles fail, these two new types of marijuana licenses will still be, may still be issued, but will go unregulated by our local laws. In other words, state legislation prevents us from banning these activities outright in town. So we need these two articles so that we can cap the number of licenses and restrict them to certain locations in our town and receive the revenues from taxes and community host agreements. It's also important to note that voting no on these two articles will not prevent from deliveries happening in Brookline from businesses located outside of our town. For the first three years, the Commonwealth is deserving these two types of licenses to social equity program participants and economic empowerment applicants. As select board Green has just explained, these two programs will prioritize people of color populations that have been disproportionately impacted by the criminalization of marijuana. The advisory committee also felt strongly that these programs would further promote equity and economic empowerment in our town. So with this, with this in mind, we extensively reviewed the articles to make sure that requirements proposed do not pose undue burden towards fulfilling these important equity goals. The process for applying for these types of licenses is the same as for other marijuana establishments. The select board issues a license as regulated by warrant article 19, and the zoning board of appeals issues a correspondence special permit, which is regulated by the warrant article 20. The special permit, which will undergo the typical site plan review through the planning department, planning board, and zoning board of appeal processes. What are these two new types of marijuana licenses? The first type is the marijuana delivery operator. This is in the marijuana establishment, as Bernard Green has mentioned, with no storefront presence that sells and delivers marijuana and marijuana products directly to consumers using an online platform. It can be compared to Amazon. One of these, one of the requirements for this license is that the warehouse has to be located within town limits and is only allowed in district zone as industrial or office, I or O. To support the mission of prioritizing social equity and economic empowerment, candidates, candidates, if a maximum size of 5,000 square feet is allowed. Through this type of business, although this type of business will require delivery vans which can carry a maximum load of $10,000 at a time, the only parking requirement will be a single onsite loading space. The advisory committee felt that the original version of the article, which required loading and unloading to occur in an enclosed space, it also required a higher parking minimum placed an undue burden on the social equity and economic empowerment candidates. So we amended Article 20 as currently reflected.
Do you please finish up?
Yes, the town would receive sales tax and host community agreement revenues. The second type, as Bernard Green has mentioned, is the marijuana courier, which is loosely compared to DoorDash. It operates, but regulations do not allow for typical food delivery service such as Uber or Grubhub to do this.
I'm sorry, but your time has elapsed, so if you could finish up really quickly.
Yes. Earlier this week, the advisory committee extensively discussed the vote and voted on the motion to defer these articles.
Oh, you muted yourself. Wasn't us.
The motion to defer failed by a vote of 6 to 17 with no abstentions. So the advisory committee votes favorable action 19, by a vote of 19 to 4 with three abstentions on Article 19 and 19 to 4 and four abstentions on Article 20. And I'm sorry, I went over time.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Anna Albuquerque, who has also signed up for a question, so maybe you could combine these.
Can I, can I have a little bit more time then for the question?
You can have three minutes for the, wait, what? You can have three minutes for the presentation and then you can ask your question, although you're slipping in.
Great. So, thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. Anna Albuquerque, town meeting member for Precinct 2. I am speaking to ask you to consider voting yes on the motion to refer warrant article 19 and 20 to moderator's committee. We can afford to study these because no one can operate without select board approval. So a gap in regulations will not subject us to an unregulated operator. In 2007, we voted on banning transferred oils from food establishments in Brookline because we discovered transferred oils are dangerous for our health. In 2019, we passed a bylaw banning the sale of flavored tobacco products, including Juul pods. In 2020, we banned sale of tobacco products for anyone born after January the 1st, 2000, because we did not want teenagers to get hooked into smoking at an early age. If we ban these products because they were, they were dangerous for our health, shouldn't we make sure that there is verification in place for these couriers when they sell these products? Also, when we backed tobacco products in Brookline, we knew that you kids could still go to Boston or Newton to buy those products, yet we decided to ban them. Yet we decided to ban them from Brookline. In two thousand and eighteen, we decided that the select board shall not issue more marijuana licenses than twenty percent of the number of liquor licenses. I don't know if you know, but we voted on the number of licenses per category. At the time, the categories were A storefront retailers, that's number twelve on the slide. B delivery only, and C social consumption retailers like the coffeehouses in Amsterdam, a number thirteen on the slide. The delivery only licenses were not, were now split into two new categories. The Amazon type, number ten on the slide, and the Uber Eats type, number twelve on the slide. So by creating new categories, we go from four delivery only to a total of eight licenses. We do not, we do not know the implications of these new businesses in communities. So why don't we wait to see the impact of these new businesses in other towns? And after that, we define our regulations. Can't we at least limit the size of the Amazon type stores? Because smaller sizes enable local underrepresented minority to own those stores in favor of national chains. Also, is there any assurance that under these articles will get underrepresented minority owners? There is nothing here that ensures that. And so this is no different from our current retailers. We came out hoping and we ended up corporate. We can do better, Brookline, with the study committee. We need to figure out how to make sure we aren't fooled again. I'm asking you to consider voting yes on the motion to refer and vote no on warrant article nineteen and twenty. And so my question is, Mr. Bernard Green mentioned that by approving these two new types of businesses will prevent operators from other towns to come into Brookline. But if I understood correctly, is that the case? How can we prevent, how can we, by having these eight licenses, how can we prevent operators from Cambridge, Newton, or Boston to come and sell to customers in Brookline? Are there regulations in place that forbid that? Thank you.
Mr. Green, do you want to answer that, or would you like counsel, Mr. Simpson, to answer that?
I'll answer that, but also counsel should chime in. There's no guarantee that operators from Brooklyn or from Cambridge or Newton or wherever will, will sell deliver marijuana in Brookline if we pass these warrant articles. But the difference is that there will be more competition from Brookline operators or Brookline delivery businesses. And there'll be less of an incentive for these out of town businesses to operate here. It's not a perfect world, but you know, this, this is, is a good world. And I'm not going to wait for the perfect in order to vote for a very good solution that addresses many issues that we are concerned about.
Mr. Simpson, do you have anything to add to this, Associate Town Council? Jonathan Simpson.
Thank you, Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Council. Ms. Albuquerque is correct, there's nothing in article nineteen or twenty that bars outside couriers from deliver, couriers based outside of Brookline from delivering to Brookline residents. I believe the, as select board member Green has stated. His point was simply that we are advancing Brookline, a Brookline business by allowing it to exist in the first place. Rather than excluding competing businesses from other municipalities.
Thank you, okay, and now call on Mr. Hyken from the planning board. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Steve Hyken, Chair of the Planning Board. First of all, the planning board did not review article nineteen, which is a general bylaw. We did discuss warrant article twenty, which is the zoning bylaw. And our main concern with the original version of that warrant article was the issue that's already been mentioned. That it included enclosed parking and loading requirements, which members of the board felt exceeded anything that the current retail stores have. So they seemed unnecessary. And so the, the planning board, with the recommendation that that be modified, voted favorable action on warrant article twenty. And then the planning staff, which was the original petitioner for article twenty. Modified that article to eliminate the requirement for an enclosed loading dock. And to limit the amount of parking that's required, the maximum now, but not require any parking. Which, you know, I think was consistent with the discussion at the planning board. I think you've heard other descriptions of what these articles entail. I would just mention, for those who may not be familiar with it, that in the zoning code, the marijuana delivery operator model, the Amazon model. Is only allowed in the industrial and office districts in Brookline, and you may not know where those are, there are only a few. The infamous Emerald Island District is an industrial district, that's its underlying zoning. There's a very small, tiny industrial district on one part of Cameron Street. And then the DPW sites on Hammond Street and the town dump, which are unlikely to be locations for these businesses, are the other industrial districts. The only office districts are two areas on the south side of Route nine. One is around Reservoir Road, where there are several office buildings, and the other is out in Chestnut Hill. So very limited locations. Just something that I believe Ms. Albuquerque mentioned that there should be some limit on the size, and there are limits in both the marijuana delivery operator and marijuana courier operations of 5,000 square feet each. Which is the same limit on size that we have in our local business districts intended to keep those operations small. So once again, the planning board voted favorable action on warrant article twenty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we will now hear from Mr. Albuquerque. Our Albuquerque. Oh. Anna saying, okay, apparently we only have Ms. Albuquerque, so I apologize. We are now going to hear from Mr. Somani.
Good evening, may I have my slides, please? Thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening. This, the warrant articles have been positioned as simply a way to align ourselves with state law and to attract and to compete, literally compete and attract marijuana businesses to Brookline in order to access the tax revenue. The referral, some people have been saying, won't stop marijuana delivery in Brookline. And by referring, we will just, this will just prevent us from earning the tax revenues and competing for these businesses. These really seem like red herrings to me. And this, the select board, I believe, still with or without this warrant article, these warrant articles, will still have the ability to license and regulate these businesses. And as I understand it, the state regulations were designed and built around this whole idea of, of the notion of, or the, the goal to promote social, social equity with marijuana establishments. So what is the referral? The referral is not an attempt to slow or stop recreational use of marijuana in Brookline. But it is an attempt to make sure that concerned parents like myself have a chance to give some input. A chance to have some thoughtful, measured regulations that are based on a policy goal that are designed to protect our most vulnerable, our teenagers. Not based on a policy goal to compete, to attract marijuana businesses in order to get tax revenue. Next slide, please. So we are asking for a bit of time because as I've read through the regulations, the proposed amendment, pardon me. There are some gaps, and these are the gaps that we would like to try and address, and we like to think these through. It's been said a few times last night and again today, that in the past, we have unfortunately rushed into some amendments and regulations and then later had to spend quite a bit of time to then go back and fix those. All we're asking for is a bit of time and input to make sure that these regulations not only support Brookline businesses and social equity. But also give parents a chance to weigh in on how to protect our underage population. Next slide, please. Marijuana, it seems to me, and I think Anna made the point, is, is very similar in my view to kind of how I perceive underage, underage use of cigarettes, alcohols, and guns. And I would very much like the chance for the town to step back and think about marijuana and the regulation of recreational marijuana in that context. I would urge you to please vote to refer, thank you.
Thank you. I am now calling on Mr. Donnell O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. Donald O'Neil, Senior, town meeting member from precinct four. Peace be with you all. I'm in opposition of these warrant articles and would like to defer back to the moderators committee until November. The, you know, the twenty-three point thirty-five percent of the minority population in town. Should, should definitely disagree with the select board's unanimous favorable action and recommendation. And the recommendation of the advisory committee of their view that warrant articles nineteen and twenty represent a worthy direction towards quickly fulfilling the town's goals on social equity and economic empowerment. To quickly fulfill the whole, whole town's goals on social equity and economic empowerment, we needed to address it with the tools that actually achieve the goals. Like we did, like this same body did last night by approving warrant article twenty-eight. Until the state gives the okay on warrant article twenty-eight, these two articles don't address Brookline's issues in-house on racial, social equity, economic justice, and empowerment. Brookline isn't on the list of areas of disproportionate impact. The list of twenty-nine, like Amington, Amherst, Boston, Braintree, Brockton, Chelsea, Fall River, Fishburg, Greenfield, Havre, Holyoke, on and on and on. But we're not on that list, so these licenses would do nothing for, for the minority population in town. So I went on the CCC webpage and, you know, I, I bring this up from time to time that I went to the CCC nine eleven two thousand and seventeen to ask, you know, what, what can we do here? The CC explained to me on the, and on the Cannabis Control Commission Commonwealth of Massachusetts website, it states on the equity page, municipal equity. And, you know, these recommendations were created to assist municipalities in creating equitable cannabis policies to mirror the social equity program established by the commission. Quote, given the unique opportunity to build a large and lucrative industry. The commission encourages municipalities to build the licensee selection process in a way that prioritizes the community's individual needs and the Commonwealth's commitment to an equitable industry. Brookline is not on the list, the state wants us to prioritize our individual needs and goals for economic justice. Maybe one day we'll be number thirty on that list, but we're not. So these two warrant articles really, really don't help the twenty-three point five percent minority population in town. Until then.
Finish up, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, Madam Moderator. Please vote no on these two articles. Let's say no to all the hungry, hungry hippos in the marijuana industry, right? That's already in there, they've gobbled up enough of the pie and I want the crust too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Albuquerque is now with us.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can I have my slide, please?
Yes, and you have three minutes.
Shall I start now or wait for my slide?
How are the slides coming? We don't have a slide, I'm afraid, so I would start now.
I'll start. Good evening, my name is Real Albuquerque, I live in precinct one. I am here tonight to ask you to oppose warrant articles nineteen and twenty. These articles expand the number of licenses with retail sales from four to twelve. Marijuana delivery operators could not sell to retail and now they will. Marijuana couriers are a new type of license that will also sell to retail. The expansion of marijuana retail types is a way to circumvent the twenty percent rule on the number of marijuana retail licenses relative to the number of liquor licenses. I ask you that you do not adopt warrant articles nineteen and twenty until more is known on how marijuana trade impacts the Brookline community. Litigation lawyer, Robert Corey, the founding father of legalized pot in Colorado, was one of the authors to the groundbreaking amendment sixty-four that helped bring pot to Colorado. After ten years, he has recently retracted his work. Why? It is because he sees how cannabis trade has not made Colorado safer, but then the opposite. He said this in his April nine op ed in the Colorado Springs Gazette. What I have changed my mind on, applying current reality I was too naive to anticipate ten years ago. Is the wisdom of a commercialized, for-profit, elitist, government-protected, privileged, monopolistic industry that perpetuates itself and its obscene profits to the detriment of the public good and the planet Earth. I came to Brookline sixteen years ago because of its public schools and quality of family living. I think the town of Brookline should be concerned about maintaining the reputation of a family-oriented neighborhood that diverse in the welcoming community. Edibles that look like candy, high concentration of THC in modern marijuana, and increased ease of access via couriers do not make Brookline safer. However, they make trading marijuana highly profitable. It is well known that the incidence of traffic accidents related to marijuana in Colorado and Washington State has skyrocketed since legalization. A triple A study released in January two thousand and twenty, and I quote, shows that the percentage of Washington State drivers involved in fatal crashes who tested positive for marijuana doubled in the five years after the state legalized pot in two thousand and twelve. Is this what we want for Brookline? I know people in Brookline voted in favor of legalizing marijuana in Massachusetts. But like Robert Corey, we now have more information about the harm caused. Let's tread slowly on this one and learn more about what increased availability to consumers of marijuana trade does to our community. Don't let outside money dictate the good that Brookline has to offer or how it should look like. I ask you to consider voting yes on the motion to refer to moderator's committee and to vote no on warrant articles nineteen and twenty. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, I'm going to call right now on one more person who signed up in advance, then I'm going to take a couple of questions, then I will come back to the lineup of people who signed up in advance. So Mr. Margolis, you are next. I believe it's Jonathan.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Margolis, precinct seven. I'm only speaking on the motion to refer and I urge you to adopt it. I think a lot of the reasons put forward for adopting these articles tonight has been that Brookline should get in on the ground floor of these new types of businesses. But getting in on the ground floor is greatly overrated. You've all heard of the Wright brothers who first flew an airplane. The Wright brothers never made much money at it. It took a man named Donald Boeing to learn how to make money by selling airplanes. You may have recall, some of you, if you're as old as I am, or maybe a little younger, you may recall the Commodore computer. It was the first computer that was portable, it was in a suitcase. It didn't last long. So getting in at the ground floor often means that you fail. Whereas waiting allows a retailer or wholesaler to learn from the experience of others. You know, Frederick the Great said fools learn by, learn from experience, I prefer to learn from the experience of others. So given what we've heard about the possible drawbacks of rushing into new types of marijuana establishments in the town. I suggest that we would be well advised to take a little time, see what seems to work and what doesn't, not too much time. As the moderators committee is directed to come back by the default town meeting. Let's give it some time and see what works and works well. So I urge you to vote no act, to vote for the referral. I do not make a recommendation on the articles themselves if referral fails. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Toffel, you have a question?
Yes, hello, thank you, Mike Toffel, precinct eight. I have two questions, if, if I may. My first question is for Mr. Simpson. Can you explain and clarify whether voting to refer or favorable action or no action would indeed affect access for Brookline residents to delivered marijuana? Our ability to protect our teens, access to edibles, or traffic accidents, all of which were mentioned in earlier presentations this evening? And then my second question is a financial.
Simpson? Jonathan?
Thank you. Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Council. In terms of, of access, the, the warrant articles, whether they are referred today to a moderator's committee or passed, the ability, the, the town is not regulating the transport of marijuana or marijuana products. So a courier from outside, who is based outside of our community, could deliver to Brookline residents regardless of what happens tonight. So to the extent that, that goes to your question about access, I would imagine that a, to the extent retailers partner with a courier that is, or outside of, based outside of Brookline or a delivery operator chooses to base itself outside of Brookline, they could deliver to residents regardless. So access would not be impeded either way. With respect to however, the, the other things you, you cited, traffic, traffic accidents, those kinds of things, it's, it's impossible for me to speculate as to those things. But again, I would simply go back to the idea that whether or not, what, what is happening today does not, and, and I think many of the speakers, including Mr. O'Neal and others, have focused on what I believe the article's true effect will be on, which is the whoever is setting up, choosing to locate those businesses and ultimately the tax revenues or other fees that can be assessed on them. Access to marijuana and marijuana products are, I do not believe will be affected greatly by these warrant articles, regardless of what happens.
Okay, thank you. Madam Moderator, can I ask my second question?
Yes.
So my second question is perhaps for Melissa Goff. So now that we understand access is actually not at stake depending on whatever we vote, the question, my, my next question is about finances. So can you explain how Brookline town revenues via the local sales tax and the community impact fee would be affected under the tonight's three possible votes? Again, refer favorable action here.
So Mel can take budget questions. Okay. Mel Kluckner, or actually, Mr. Simpson has raised his hand. So you're it, Mr. Simpson. You need to unmute yourself? John Simpson?
All right, yes, I am unmuting. Sorry about that. Mr. Toffel, if you'd allow me to respond. Again, Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Council. The, there are two major revenue streams that come from marijuana establishments. One of them is the impact fees, which are imposed by way of the host community agreement and other agreements that are signed with the establishment. Those are signed with establishments that are located based, those are assigned between the establishment and the community in which it is located. So to the extent we allow these uses in town, delivery operators or couriers can, will of course have headquarters and they will be located somewhere. So that's what we would be, our zoning, for example, would be allowing them to be, their headquarters to be located here, although that does not mean the vans would be located here or where their deliveries would necessarily go. But their headquarters, if their headquarters are in Brookline, they will need to sign a host community agreement and pay impact fees to, to Brookline. So, and similarly, a delivery operator whose warehouse is in Brookline, if the zoning allows for it, will pay impact fees to Brookline. The additional, additionally, there's the, the other revenue stream is the sales tax. And sales tax is always paid by the seller of the, of the marijuana or marijuana. So the, in that case, couriers do not pay. A courier would not, regardless of where it is headquartered, does not participate in that transaction. They're simply transporting the product. So they do not, they, there's no sales tax question there. However, a delivery operator who is, whose warehouse is in Brookline and makes it, every time it makes a sale, Brookline would be able to charge the sales tax surcharge onto that sale. So those are the two, the two revenue streams and I, and if, and as you have all heard already today, that is the, the fiscal interest the town has in allowing these uses potentially to cite in Brookline is there is a, a positive fiscal impact from those two revenue streams.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. I'm gonna go back to the list and call on Sher Duffield.
Okay. Hi, Sher Duffield, Precinct Six. I've lived in Brookline with my husband Jeremy and four school-aged children since two thousand three. And I've been the PTO co-chair for three years. I've coached girls on the run. I'm a scout leader. I've been a room parent every year for at least one classroom. So I've been very involved with the kids. I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent and asking you to vote yes on referral. So as it's been said, we know that marijuana delivery is coming to Brookline. The question is whether we rush to issue licenses ourselves to chase the revenue or if we pause and actually craft articles that are going to reflect our community values and concerns. So you may know that marijuana is not neutral to young people. There are actually health impacts. And consider some of these health impacts. So contrary to what the industry would tell you, marijuana is addictive. One in six kids gets addicted, including the son of a good friend of mine who spent the last year at a therapeutic boarding school to deal with his addiction. We also have studies showing cognitive impairment and documented increases in mental illness, including depression and psychosis leading to suicide. And that actually happened to a friend of mine in college. Also marijuana use by adolescents has been steadily increasing. Science journals, including JAMA, are showing an increase in females who use cannabis to relax, but actually it has the converse effect of increasing their anxiety and depression. Also, there's data that tracks the risk perception and use among adolescents over time. And it shows, this research shows that adolescence's risk perception of marijuana, as it decreases, youth increases. And a twenty nineteen RAN study showed that there's an increase in cannabis when kids in use, when kids see signs in their neighborhood. So obviously with the delivery fleet, presumably kids are going to be seeing a lot of signs driving around Brookline. So, you know, you can imagine the free advertising of all these cars driving around in Brookline delivering cannabis. I would just ask the question, would we permit fleets of cars delivering vapes, menthol cigarettes, guns? I also want to add that delivery of marijuana is not a solution to the nuisance problems at NATA. So during the state of emergency, the NATA has moved to a appointment-only model and the neighbors have had no problems. You remember how many problems we've had in the neighborhood with NATA beforehand? So the solution to NATA is to actually move, stay with an appointment-only model, not to, not to count on deliveries to solve that problem.
Could you please finish up?
Yeah, please vote yes on referral.
What is the point of order?
I just wanted to, this is Carlos Ridraho, Advisory Committee in Precinct Fourteen. Just wanted to clarify that delivery vans cannot be marked or have any signage that expresses what they have in there.
Thank you. That was not a point of order, but, okay. Alisa Jonas. Alyssa Jonas?
Yeah, yeah, you got it. I'm trying to be here. Um, I, I actually do just-
Who are you?
I'm sorry, Alyssa Jonas, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Sixteen. Actually, do you want to just make a comment following up on Ms. Duffield, which is that I also think it is relevant to think about our role in fostering addiction to various kinds of drugs by, by allowing increased sales through Brookline, the Brookline system. I spoke to a Harvard Medical School professor who's a doctor and he told me that the primary route to cigarette addiction is marijuana these days. Kids smoke marijuana and then from there they go to cigarettes. And we've been very concerned about cigarette usage. So if we're concerned about that, we should also be concerned about marijuana. Well, my question is, is there anyone in town who has, who has knowledge of the number of delivery operators that are approved in the neighboring towns, Boston, Cambridge, Needham, Newton, Dedham come to mind?
Mr. Simpson, I'm going to see if you know and then if somebody else volunteers. Okay, Mr. Simpson does not know. He's shaking his head. That's all right. Mr. Green or Mr. Ridraho, do you know?
I mean, I don't really know, but-
Actually, Monique Baldwin is who I'm going to call on. I apologize. She is our marijuana coordinator. I apologize for cutting you off, Mr. Green.
No problem.
Hello? Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, yes, sure. My name is Monique Baldwin. I'm the cannabis licensing and mitigation coordinator from town. I do, I don't know how many there are in total, delivery operators. I do know that the CCC has just, as of I think May twenty-eighth, permitted that they've enabled people to apply. So to, you know, everyone else's point, this is just so extremely new that, you know, we're all really, all of the municipalities are really, you know, in the same boat right now in terms of, you know, we don't know, there's not enough information out there yet. So, sorry. That's all I have for you.
Oh, Mr. Sandman has some information for us.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mike Sandman, Advisory Committee Chair. Applications are just now being accepted for these two types of businesses. So it's really very unlikely that any businesses have actually been licensed and it's impossible to know from where we sit what the position of the various other municipalities in the, in west of Boston that Ms. Jonas asked about will be doing.
The question has been called. I will allow it to be heard. We will have a two-thirds vote to pass and decide if, to vote on the three questions. Oh, God, eventually I'll get that. Okay, apologize. In the queue who's previously signed up is Arthur Conquest, Janice Khan, Regina Fraley. In line to ask questions, Carolyn Goodwin, Marissa Vote, Jonathan Davies, Linda Olson Pelkey, Amanda Zimmerman, Lauren Bernard, and Nicole McClellan. We will now start the vote on whether to call the question. Okay, Rita McNally.
McNally, Precinct Two, yes.
We have Eileen and Michael Berger sharing a phone. So if you could each identify yourself and then vote separately, that would be great.
Michael Berger, Precinct- Precinct Sixteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. All right. Little confusion here. But I was able to actually vote with the internet. That was reestablished.
Oh, okay, you voted. Did-
But I did not. Berger, Precinct Fifteen.
Eileen Berger?
No, my vote is no. Thank you.
Okay, even I can do this math. Hundred and eleven, yes. Ninety-three, no. Fourteen abstentions. The motion fails. We will continue discussion and I will call on Mr. Conquest.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Arthur Conquest, Precinct Six.
Arthur Conquest?
Can you hear me? Sorry.
You're very low. So speak loudly, please.
How's that? Is that better?
No. Your microphone is, if you could turn your microphone up, that would be very helpful.
I would, how does, how does, does anybody know how to do that?
I don't, I don't know what kind of-
I'll go to the next person and when I come back, I'll, I'll turn the microphone up, okay?
Okay, that sounds good. Ms. Khan, Janice Khan is next. K-A-H-N.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Janice Khan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Fifteen, speaking in favor of the referral motion. First, a small tutorial on liquor licenses with thanks to Monique Baldwin and Jonathan Simpson. The number of marijuana business licenses that the town can issue is tied to the number of liquor licenses that have been issued and specifically package store licenses. So I'd like to clarify the often confusing world of liquor licenses. The town, based on its population, has allowed a certain number of liquor licenses called its quota. There are three classifications of retail licenses. On-premises licenses, commonly referred to as pouring licenses, such as in restaurants and hotels. Off-premises licenses, commonly referred to as package store licenses, also found in supermarkets and convenience stores, and special one-day licenses for special events. And there are four types of retail liquor licenses within those classifications. So all alcohol beverages, wine, malt, or wine and malt combined. For retail marijuana businesses, the state regulations put the baseline number of licenses for each community at twenty percent of off-premises licenses that have been issued. The town has issued twelve off-premises all beverages licenses and six off-premises wine and malt licenses for a total of eighteen. So twenty percent of eighteen is three point six, which gets the town to approximately four retail marijuana business licenses. The town also has six off-premises wine and malt licenses that have yet to be issued, but there are no current applications. So here's some background. In May two thousand eighteen, Town Meeting passed a series of warrant articles in response to the legalization of recreational marijuana in Massachusetts. Brookline residents voted nearly sixty percent in favor, which meant that the town was bound to adopt the state regulations, which were codified in July of two thousand seventeen, setting up certain default parameters. One was prohibiting state licensing of operations within five hundred feet of K-12 schools, which the town adopted. What is notable about the way these earlier warrant articles were brought to Town Meeting is the high level of community engagement that occurred in the process. Francisco Torres and the planning department at that time coordinated much of the outreach. An online survey was conducted to get a sense of public sentiment regarding restricting various types of uses in the town. Sixty-three percent said no. Whether or not to set a cap on the number of retail establishments, fifty-six percent said yes. And asking for feedback on a draft marijuana zoning map. Nearly eight hundred responses to the survey were received. In addition, office hours were held at Town Hall for several months to respond to questions Town Meeting members might have on the proposed articles. And there were public hearings, outreach to various community groups, including the BNA, Senior Center, EDAB, and Brookline Chamber of Commerce.
Could you please finish up? You have fifteen seconds.
Okay, these outreach efforts were made prior to the passage of the warrant articles and before the town had any experience with these new businesses, including NATA, the first business to open in the greater Boston area, and which, by the way, has arranged for a courier in Bellingham, I believe. Articles nineteen and twenty are coming before Town Meeting without a similar effort at community engagement. And now that we have some experience in Brookline with marijuana retail businesses, I believe it's the time for a community conversation to discuss these new uses and address any concerns that individuals might have. Referral will give us that opportunity to have the conversation. Please vote yes on referral. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conquest. I'm going to take a question now and then come back to you. Marissa Vote?
Hi, my name is Marissa Vote. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Four and I actually, I have two questions. The first is, I was wondering about the comparison to alcohol and tobacco. Do we regulate alcohol and tobacco delivery or courier services? And if so, how would, how do these warrant articles compare to our regulation of alcohol and tobacco delivery? And then the second question is, what would change practically if we, if, if we pass these warrant articles? And then the second question is, what would change practically if we, if we pass these warrant articles now? But then if there was further community engagement and we realized that there was something that, that we should change versus the referral motion, you know, kind of, is there something that we can't change later in our bylaws?
Okay, Ms. Baldwin, I'm going to give you the first question, and then Mr. Simpson, I am going to give you the second question.
Hi, Monique Baldwin, Cannabis Licensing and Mitigation Coordinator for the town. So in terms of alcohol delivery, to be, I have to be honest, I don't know the answer to that, to that question. I would have to defer that question to the, the alcohol licensing staff person. I think her name is Tiffany Sousa, if she's available.
Draw what inference you may, but Brookline does indeed allow delivery of alcohol. But let me call on Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Counsel. In terms of your, your question as to whether, whatever we do, can we change it later? A short answer, yes, we always have the ability, and I think Brookline Town Meeting is, is an excellent example of the ability to iterate or frankly realize that, that they've done something that, that perhaps they, they should have done differently in the first place. I think the Micro Units article from a few nights ago is an example of that. However, one thing that is undergirding this entire process is the fact that we are operating underneath a very mutable state statutory and regulatory situation. One of the things we're trying to do here is trying to keep up with some of the ways the regulations have shifted over the last couple of years, simply because the, the, the greater, the greater the distance between what our bylaws say and what the state allows, and more importantly mandates, the more of a gray area we have, and the less actually, in my opinion, the less control we end up with, because then we just, we can't tell Town Meeting or our residents exactly what is and isn't ultimately going to be permissible. So while I can say, like I said, short answer is, we can certainly go back in, in the fall or next year or the year after or so on, go back and try to change things if we think something's not working. I would emphasize that what we're doing right now is at its heart, simply trying to keep up with the state. And to the extent we come back in the future, I would certainly, and I, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues in planning, but would certainly advocate trying to continue to the best we can keep up with the state regulation, regulatory scheme. To the extent we do some, we don't like how things turn out today, we are doing what we are doing today in large part because of what the state has done. So if we don't end up not liking it, there is a, it, it may not behoove us to try to change it later because we're still going to be operating under the state scheme. So sorry to take more time than maybe was necessary, but I just want to make sure I, I'm trying to give you the full picture.
Mr. Conquest.
Is that, is that better?
That's much better. That's great.
I found a mistake, okay? My, my mistake. It'll be three minutes this time. Thank you very much for the last time, okay? Arthur Conquest, precinct 6. I'm asking that warrant article 19 and 20 be referred to a moderator's committee. For the record, I don't smoke, I don't engage in illegal drugs, and I hardly drink one beer every three months. Less than a month ago, I attended a marijuana licensing hearing for a group of out-of-state white men and their lawyer, who were seeking to open a shop, a marijuana shop in Brookline. What caught my attention was that this group had hired former Brookline High School student Tito Jackson and a former Boston City Councilor as a consultant to them for diversity, inclusion, and equity issues for the company, for the company after they had received their permit to sell marijuana in Brookline. Why after the fact versus before they have received their permit? What is the racial breakdown of the companies who are already receiving licenses and are doing business in Brookline? How many black or Latinx, Asians, or people of color in Brookline hold licenses to sell marijuana? How many black or Latinx, Asian, or people of color have been terminated from their positions as marijuana, at marijuana establishments in Brookline? And those who have been terminated have been replaced by whom? By black, Latinx, Asian, or people of color? And how many black, Latinx, Asian, Asians, or people of color are invested with any of these companies? There are just, these are just some of the questions I have. A moderator's committee will give all voices a chance at the table before decisions have already been made, which will paint, which will plant seeds for all stakeholders involved. Leaving black, Latinx, Latin, and people of color out in the cold and divorced from the center of power needs to be history in this community. Again, I'm asking for 19 and 20 to be referred to moderator's committee, moderator's committee. Thank you, in advance.
I'm going to, since we just called the question and it failed, I'm going to allow a few more people to speak. Jonathan Davies has a question.
Thank you, Mrs. Sorry, thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you. Jonathan Davis, precinct 10. I have a question. When you buy cannabis at a retailer, there's a strong change.
You're breaking up.
At the door.
Mr. Davis, you're breaking up, so we can't understand you.
Store full of employees looking at customers. I'll try it again.
Okay.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Jonathan, thank you. I'll try again. When you buy cannabis at a retailer, there's a strong change, chain of vetting the age of the purchaser from IDing the purchaser at the door with a whole store full of, of employees looking at the customers. But with the delivery and courier situation, how much control is there at the point of delivery that the recipient of the package is age 21 or older? How many people, employees of the company are actually being
Losing you again.
At the delivery courier. That's a.
Ms. Baldwin.
How many people are actually, in addition to the.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up. We really can't understand you, Mr. Davis. Do my tech people have any suggestions? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Baldwin, I, if I interpreted the question correctly, I believe it was, what are the restrictions to make sure that the people who receive the deliveries are in fact of legal age and qualified to do so?
Yeah, I'm Monique Baldwin, Cannabis Licensing and Mitigation Coordinator. It's my understanding that there will be ID verification during, it depends whether that's for a courier you're talking about or a delivery operator. I believe with delivery operators, since the consumer would be ordering online, that there are two different levels of ID verification. So one at the initial, you know, checkout, and then the second would be when the delivery is, you know, scheduled to occur. I do know that the license needs to match the license that, you know, it was, that's on the checkout as well as it has to be the exact address that the person is delivering to. So if, you know, if, even if you are over 21 and you are, you know, at that location, but the location doesn't match your ID, then it's my understanding that a delivery will not occur. So I think that the CCC is doing, you know, a really great job at ensuring that, you know, the deliveries are thoughtful. They're certainly regulated. And, and in terms of a courier, I think it's, it's the same situation.
Thank you. Regina Frally.
Thank you, madam. Regina Frally from precinct 16. I just, several speakers have hit the nail that I would have hit. I want to add a couple of others. In reading the article 20, word for word, there's some issue I have with the fact that there's rounded up. When in fact, we just spent two nights and dozens of hours discussing whether we can have an LHD, and each time it lost, it lost by a fraction, and nobody said, let's round it up. Okay, so we're not being consistent. We need to take a look at whether rounding it up is something that should be done in this case. And as Janice Khan said, there are six more off-premise licenses waiting to be awarded as soon as somebody wants to open that kind of store. So the idea of a cap is very fluid. And if the cap is, if the liquor licenses are fluid, so will everything else, including whether there are more marijuana establishments itself. As far as security is concerned, I was very disappointed to read that the Planning Director, in her discretion, could make certain requests. That word discretion is in there, that there would be, may require submissions from the couriers. That's too wobbly. That's too weak. We need to have that discussion about just how firm, and we need shelves and muss in these things. Finally, security is an issue. Are we going to have gun permits for the, the couriers who need to be protected? The, there's so many questions that I think are worthy, and they're certainly not covered in the, the, the article 20 in particular. Not at all covered. And that's not good enough. And as people said, we really need these neighborhood discussions. We need to see who we are and who we want to be, and how these things will affect our own idea of who we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Olson Pelkey, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Linda Olson Pelkey, Town Meeting Member, precinct 2. I'm afraid I have several questions.
Okay, I'm going to limit you to two because that's what we've told other people, and that's been.
Okay, all right. So I, I still think the, okay, I think the presentation on the license and the number of license and the percentage and the new use has been very confusing. So are we adopting the 20% as a choice, or is that from the Cannabis Control Commission? And you know, it's, so now it's set at four for each license type, and it's four for the retailers, and it's four for the whatever. That's my understanding. So, so that's one question. And then the other question is, we have, in, in the past, because we were a yes community, we were told that we can't prohibit these things. And so I'm wondering, what is it that this moderator's committee is going to change about anything? And can, okay, I, I have to veer here. Can an applicant come and apply if we do not pass these warrant articles?
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Counsel. So Ms. Pelkey's first question was related to choice. I, the, the new bylaw matches, the decision was made in drafting article 19 to match the cap requirements that we had applied to retailers. It extends that a similar cap calculation for delivery operators and couriers. So as, as has been stated before, we would be allowing up to four licenses for delivery operators and four licenses for couriers who headquartered in town. However, that, that is a, that represents a choice by the drafters of this article. Unlike marijuana retailers, there is not a requirement that we set the cap at 20% or of issued package store licenses or higher. However, there is a requirement that we allow these uses unless there is a townwide vote to prohibit them, which we do not have and do not have plans to take. Therefore, we cannot ban them outright purely via Town Meeting's action or inaction. That being said, a an applicant, if we do not pass these articles tonight, an applicant could theoretically seek to apply for permission to put in one of these uses. However, that, that is undertaking, that, that type of undertaking would be sort of questionable from a, regardless of a number of perspectives. While there is, as I've just described, an argument to be made potentially that, that we cannot outright ban such a use, say, a delivery operator, we refer it to the moderator's committee, and a delivery operator nonetheless tries to apply in the intervening time. I keep in mind, however, that such an operator is going to have to go to the state and first, and then go to, come to the town, seeking a host community agreement with the select board, attempt to get site, to apply for the permitting necessary to get site plan review, or excuse me, attempt, attempt to apply for the building permit from the Building Commissioner. And as many of you have encountered in various other warrant article contexts, the Brookline zoning bylaw is exclusionary. We do not, if a use is not listed, it is not permitted. So we would be definitely, and like I've described it before and was described at Advisory Committee several nights ago, we would been, we would be in a gray area, to say the least. But it would be a gray area that the applicant would be facing as well. And because of that, while it is possible that someone would attempt to try to take advantage of the intervening period, I, I do not know if that should, if that would be a persuasive argument to some, to one, to anyone who's voting here today, because there are so many, it would be such a questionable avenue to take, to invest the time and resources in, in an application that could ultimately be rendered futile if we are either vindicated that it isn't a permitted use, or ultimately do take that Town, may vote to ban it, to ban it ultimately. So the, the, the notion that there's, that there could be a, that not doing something means that the, the floodgates might open is, is a, is, has, has a number of different sort of, you can look at it from a number of different angles. But I would, again, point out that we are barred by section 3 from simply excluding any of these uses, and these, and those include marijuana delivery operator and marijuana courier. We cannot purely by action or inaction of Town Meeting ban those uses, regardless of how we voted at this point, because after 2019, it doesn't matter if we are a yes community or not.
Okay, let's call the question. Let's take a vote on whether or not to call the question. A two-thirds majority is required. Oh my God, I thought it, I thought I'd remember this time. I apologize. By November, I will remember this. Lauren Bernard, Nicole McClellan, Amy Lindenboim, Michael Sandman, Kate Silbo, John Bassett, Scott Englander, and Marty Rosenthal are in queue. But we are going to take a vote and then see if we will be hearing from them. Okay, Ms. McNally?
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Okay, by my, I'm going to wait for the clerk to tell me because it passes. Okay, it passes. We are going to call the question. We are going to first vote on the motion to refer to a moderator's committee, which needs a majority to pass. Okay, excuse me, we have a point of order before we begin, so do not begin the vote yet. Okay, do not vote yet. Mr. Salmon, what is your point of order?
Yeah, sorry, Madam Moderator, Mike Sandman, Advisory Committee Chair. What just flashed on my screen anyway was 65%, 35%. And I don't quite see that making two-thirds. But we just have the numerical vote and those of us who are numerate will be able to figure it out.
Zoom includes abstentions and abstentions do not count to the total analysis of what two-thirds is because it changes the denominator. So in fact, it did fail or passed, geez. Okay, I'm going to read the numbers again. 143, yes, 66, no, 12 abstentions. Has your point of order been answered, Mr. Sandman? Okay, it's 68.4%. That it passed by. Who? Diana Spiegel, what is your point of order?
It was just answered.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we are now going to vote on the actual question of whether to refer this to a moderator's committee. Okay, Ms. McNally. And again, you do not have to say what precinct you're from. We know it's number two. So what is your?
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Okay, the motion fails. 104, yes, 113, no, 10 abstentions. We are now going to vote first on Article 19, which is a change to the general bylaws. The main motion is found on 19-15. After that, we will vote on Article 20, which is a change to the voting bylaws. For Article 19, uh, just a majority is required. Can we start the vote, please? Ms. McNally?
McNally, Precinct 2, yeah, no. I'm sorry, no.
Okay. Okay, the motion passes with 166, yes, 44, no, and 14 abstentions. We will now move on to Article 20, which is a change to the zoning bylaws. It needs a two-thirds majority to be passed. Ms. McNally?
McNally, no.
Okay, the motion passes with 168, yes, 47, no, and 10 abstentions. Okay, we are now going to take up Article 23. Article 23 is bought, brought by Mr. Van Schoyck and seconded by Mr. Selwyn. It is found in your materials, pages 23-6 to 23-7. So the main motion is, it relates to a change in the zoning bylaws regarding inclusionary zoning and amends certain affordable housing requirements. And I have Mr. Blood, who will speak for five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. May I please have my slides presented? Thank you. I'm Roger Blood, speaking for the Housing Advisory Board, which is the, has, has brought this article forward as the, as the petitioner. As was mentioned, it's an inclusionary zoning bylaw amendment, part of an ongoing effort by the HAB to, to strengthen our inclusionary zoning. You'll recall that we, we passed a companion article last November to broaden the base requirements for inclusionary zoning as applied to developers. Next slide, please. I'll, I'll try to give you the essence of this article. It's complicated, but then we'll welcome questions and answers. Why do we need Article 23 now? There's four reasons and there's a piece of this in, in the article itself. We'll, we'll cover each of these four in a little more detail. First of all, to align our zoning bylaw to state criteria so that new units created under inclusionary zoning can, can be assured to be counted on the state subsidized housing inventory, the so-called SHI. Second, to reestablish income eligibility, eligibility limits for inclusionary zoning affordable units, which limits will expire in their present form when the Brookline's subsidized housing inventory reaches the magic 10% level. Third, to strengthen private developers' affordable housing compliance requirements while not jeopardizing the financial feasibility of good projects that produce affordable units. And fourth, to refine our inclusionary zoning requirements to better serve the full range of low and moderate income residents. Next slide, please. So first, to align the zoning requirements with state criteria so that the units can be counted on the SHI. SHI eligible units must comply with the state's DC Department Housing Community Development, DHCD, formulas that relate rents and sales prices, household sizes, number of bedrooms and monthly housing costs. The difference between state rules and our current bylaw, if we followed our current bylaw literally, could prevent the affordable units under inclusionary zoning from being counted on the state's SHI toward and beyond the magic 10%. So that this proposed bylaw change conforms with DHCD rules and procedures and will actually then align the words of our bylaw with what we're actually doing. Next slide, please. The second of these four points is to reestablish income eligibility limits for inclusionary zoning. After we've reached the SHI 10% limit, our current bylaw has a rather rigid prescription in it that two-thirds or 10% of units be affordable at 10%, 80% of area median. And the remaining third may exceed the 80 and up to 100%. This two-thirds, one-third formula, it only is in effect while the town is under the 10%. And so this is a timely needed amendment because warrant Article 23 will replace that expiring two-thirds, one-third, those ranges with an improved framework that advances several housing policy objectives that the HAB supports. Third? Next slide, please. Third is to strengthen developers' IZ compliance requirements while not jeopardizing financial feasibility of good projects. Article 3023 reduces the, the renters and purchasers baseline income limits on the affordable units, which, which by doing that reduces the allowable rents for the affordable and therefore increases the compliance cost for the developer.
Could you please finish up, Mr. Blood? Sorry to interrupt.
Consultant Pam McKinney has confirmed that these costs will not jeopardize our ability to produce good projects. And next slide, please. Fourth, to refine the requirements to better serve low and moderate income residents, the reduced income limits will be reduced on rental from 80 to 50% of area median income as a baseline requirement and 80% for owners. There will be a supplemental payment option for developers who, who may seek to serve a higher tier of income within the range of the bylaw.
Could you finish up, please?
Yes, this makes sense. We're going to treat renter and owner incomes differently for the first time. Next slide, last slide, please. Well, I've, I've, I've really covered this, so I won't, I won't go over time much more that we were addressing two immediate needs and we're addressing several housing policy advances that are favored by the HAB and I've already mentioned them. So I thank the select board and the advisory committee, the planning board and the Committee for Diversity and Inclusion and Committee Relations for their support for this article. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Van Schoyck, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator, John Van Schoyck from the Select Board. What, as Roger Blood from the Housing Advisory Board just described, warrant Article 23 is being proposed by the HAB and amends Section 4.08 of the town zoning bylaw. And that, that particular section deals with affordable housing requirements. Article 23 will update the range of eligible households served by Section 4.08. Once the town reaches the 10% on subsidized housing inventory, SHI, differentiating eligible household incomes for rental and owner occupied affordable units and expanding the overall mix of affordable housing that can be produced via, via inclusionary zoning. This article will also provide a technical fix to align the definition of affordable unit with the definition used by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, simplifying the way that rents and prices for affordable units are determined while staff works to ensure that eligible units created through this mechanism will continue to be included on the state's SHI, that's the subsidized housing inventory, in the future. Based on an extensive financial review of the town's inclusionary zoning bylaw undertaken by the HAB in 2019 and early 2020, with the support of a financial consultant, warrant Article 23 ensures that the town will continue to leverage maximum benefits from residential development projects in the form of onsite units and cash payments to support Brookline's affordable housing goals. After hearing testimony from the HAB Chair, Mr. Blood, the Select Board voted five to zero favorable action on the following motion. And the motion is on page 23, six of the combined reports. It begins, voted that the town will amend Section 4.08 of the Brookline zoning bylaw, inclusionary zoning as further detailed below. And it's on page 23-6 of the combined reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Selwyn, you are up now. Mr. Selwyn, you can go ahead. You're unmuted, apparently. You can, why don't you give it a try and try speaking with us, see what happens? You muted yourself again, I'm sorry. Now you're unmuted. Okay, we're going to come back to you because apparently there are technical difficulties. We will hear from Mr. Hyken from the Planning Board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Steve Hyken, Chair of the Planning Board and the Planning Board Representative to the Housing Advisory Board. As you heard from the Select Board, Representative Mr. Van Schoyck, the Planning Board also had a detailed presentation from Mr. Blood as to the reasons and the math behind this proposed change to the inclusionary zoning bylaw. As you've heard, currently, the inclusionary zoning requirements are the same in terms of income limits for rental and homeownership. And this change allows a different bracket of affordability, a lower bracket for renters versus homeowners is more aligned with the current market. There will be a further development of these income limits and the related fees that you've heard mentioned in a set of guidelines developed by the HAB, which will be reviewed and approved by the Planning Board in the near future. All of this is necessary because as the town nears meeting and exceeding the 10% subsidized housing inventory guideline that makes us subject with little recourse to 40B developments, those old limits really no longer apply. So we're establishing new and more flexible limits that, as you've heard, our very valued real estate consultant Pam McKinney has determined will generate increased fees across a broader range of projects, but not chill affordable housing development or any housing development in the very hot market in Brookline. So the Planning Board, by a vote of five to zero to one, recommends favorable action on warrant Article 23 and we hope that town meeting will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. I am now going to call on Mr. Selwyn. I will note that there is nobody speaking against this proposition, so. Mr. Selwyn, are you with us?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Oh, good. Well, I will be very quick because the three previous speakers have provided very excellent summaries and I don't want to repeat what they've said. This is a complex warrant article and we've done everything we can to try to simplify it in the, in the combined report. So I will just simply report that the advisory committee, by a unanimous vote of 26, 00, recommends favorable action.
Thank you, very succinct. All right, we are now going to take a vote. We have, we're now going to take a vote. I'm sorry, Ms. Gilman, but we're, I announced we're taking a vote. It's a two-thirds vote. And the question has been called. Voting will start. Oh, God, Jane Gilman. We are, we have not heard from Jane Gilman. She is the only one in queue. Let's take the vote and see what happens. We're voting on the main motion. Oh, no, I'm sorry, there's a motion to call the question. I apologize. It's that, I apologize, motion to call the question as to whether or not to vote on Article 23. All right. Okay, Ms. McNally.
McNally Precinct Two, yes.
The motion passes, 156 yes, 49 no, 11 abstentions. We are now going to vote on the main article, Article 23, which changes the bylaws, the zoning bylaws relating to inclusionary zoning, as you just heard. We will start voting in one second, and a two thirds vote is required. Ms. McNally.
McNally Precinct Two, yes.
250 yes, three no, six abstentions.
The motion passes by a vote of 215 yes, three no, six abstentions. Welcome back. We are now going to go to Article 34, which is a resolution urging the Select Board to adopt a payment in addition to tax program. It is moved by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Boers. It is found on pages 34 to 7 through 34, nine. Up, it was found there, but it's now on the supplemental materials that were submitted by the Advisory Committee and adopted by the petitioners. You will find those on supplement two, page one. But we need to make a language change at the beginning of the supplement. So if you turn to page two. On page one, the beginning of the second paragraph, please delete "The Town Will Adopt" and change the language to "Voted That the Town Adopt." All right, I will now call on the speakers. And I will note that nobody is speaking against this, but before we jump into that issue, I will call on Mr. Harris, who has five minutes. No, Paul.
Correct, this is John Harrison. Paul Harris.
I apologize, I got my Harris's mixed up. Yes, Paul Harris, I apologize. You still have five minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I apologize for that.
Great. Okay, I'm Paul Harris, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. Brookline is a microcosm of the world. There are many unmet needs in Brookline, and some of these needs can be satisfied with money. Warren Article 34 calls upon the Select Board to encourage Brookline households with a net worth above $10 million to make annual voluntary contributions to the town of Brookline. Voluntary contributions from other households will also be gratefully accepted. Nationally, the top 1% of all US households have a net worth of $10 million or more. According to the Federal Reserve, from 1989 to 2020, the portion of all US household wealth owned by the top 1% increased from 23% to 31%, up by more than a third. The portion of wealth owned by the bottom 50% of US households decreased from 4% to 2%, cut in half. Warren Article 34 responds to increasing wealth inequality in Brookline as Elizabeth Warren's federal wealth tax proposal responds to increasing wealth inequality in the US. Two differences between the proposals are, first, Warren Article 34 is at the local level, and second, Warren Article 34 is voluntary. There's a lot of charitable capacity in Brookline households, but currently no easy way for the town to raise charitable donations for projects within the town's jurisdiction, meaning only the town can do them, but that the town cannot afford to do. Two questions are, first, do Brookline households of means have available capacity to contribute to the town without reducing their current giving to nonprofit organizations? And second, does Brookline have real unmet needs? The answer to both questions is yes. Although no one has yet made a formal financial commitment, potential donors in Brookline have expressed interest and told me their capacity to give is growing. Many people who live in Brookline have real unmet needs. 12% of Brookline residents live in poverty, more than half of whom are people of color. I'm a member of Brookline for Racial Justice and Equity Bridge and have also been meeting on Zoom with the Executive Director of the Brookline Community Foundation to sell Pharaoh Puigbo. Unmet needs in Brookline include affordable housing repairs and better housing. Needs in the schools include greater access to social workers, tutoring, help with college applications and financial aid, summer enrichment, and youth employment programs. Brookline also needs more resources to fund climate action projects, diversity programs, senior programs, and programs for disabled individuals. In January 1989, I was on vacation in Thailand and spent 24 hours in a Buddhist monastery. During that time, I had a three hour, one-on-one conversation with one of the Buddhist monks. He said, "Wealth is good, but health is better." Why? If we have wealth but not health, we can't enjoy the wealth. Then he said, "Health is good, but wisdom is better." Why? If we have health but not wisdom, we suffer because we know sooner or later we will lose our health. If we have wisdom, we can live happily and die gracefully. I'm happy today because I have enough, including enough sense to know that I have enough. Brookline is a wealthy community. Are we a healthy community? Are we a wise community? Are we happy? How can we become healthier, wiser, happier, kinder, and more loving? The time is ripe for Brookline to demonstrate global leadership.
Could you please finish up?
Yes, we can develop and realize a 21st century vision for Brookline in a global context, a healthy, wise, happy Brookline community that is sustainable, just, peaceful, and prosperous. Please vote favorable action on the Advisory Committee's supplemental resolution found on supplement number two, page two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boers. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator, Harry Boers, speaking for the Advisory Committee. The article before us is a resolution that asks the Select Board to establish a payment in addition to taxes program, or a pate, or PIA, if you prefer tomatoes, and establish a committee to define guidelines on these uses of those funds. A PIA is a program for private property owners who are already paying real estate taxes, though maybe in a position to contribute a bit more. It's sort of akin to pilots for nonprofits, but for individuals. As envisioned by the petitioners, if Brookline had a PIA, residents of significant means could voluntarily pay into this trust some amount greater than their assessed real estate taxes, this in order to support a variety of yet-to-be-defined programs for the common good, programs that might be beyond the financial grasp of the town at the time. These voluntary payments would be a tax deductible under IRS code. As we know, we are a community with many in need and many who are well off, but we are one community. Currently, residents can and do contribute to funds in the town beyond their property tax payments, and that's generally done as a directed gift to the town for specific purposes, such as the underwriting with scholarship or recreation facility. A PIA would be more general in nature. It could be directed to a number of defined pressing needs, but would not be donor defined. Rather, a PIA would be controlled by the town and therefore have a measure of flexibility, allowing the town to direct resources in a coordinated and targeted fashion. The Advisory Committee did have some concerns that this proposal might mean, what it might mean in terms of staff time and commitment, because we don't want to see an implied commitment or new project assigned to an already overburdened, overstretched staff member. So a newly established Select Board Committee would need to seriously consider the structure of a related program and the staffing needs it result. Nothing prevents the town, however, from developing a limited scope program. And any proposed program will need to be describing generally where the funds will be used so that those contributing can have confidence that their donation will be used for programs and people in need. Of course, it's easy to be cynical about such a program. After all, who really wants to pay more in taxes to your local government? And do we think that the town can or should manage such an operation? We can ask many loaded questions, but a Select Board Committee can address these questions. And if this effort merely heightens the awareness of opportunity and need in our community, enough to inspire giving to existing programs in our town, then that alone would be a success.
Could you please finish up?
Yep, this PIA fund is the place to hold funds when those of us with resources step up to provide for those in need in our community. And establishing this program is worth a try, and that's why the Advisory Committee is recommending favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weintraub.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am Bob Weintraub, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. I first of all want to thank Paul Harris for his passion and hard work in this article. Here's a story. Years ago, anthropologist Margaret Mead was asked by a student what she considered to be the first sign of civilization in a culture. The student expected Dr. Mead to talk about fish hooks or clay pots or grinding stones, but no. Dr. Mead said that the first sign of civilization in an ancient culture was a femur, thigh bone, that had been broken and then healed. Mead explained that in the animal kingdom, if you break your leg, you die. You cannot run from danger, you cannot get to the river for a drink or hunt for food. You are meat for prowling beasts. No animal survives a broken leg long enough for the bone to heal. A broken femur that has healed is A broken femur that has healed is evidence that someone has taken time to stay with the one who fell, has bound up the wound, carried the person to safety, and has tended the person through recovery. Helping someone else through difficulty is where civilization starts. Warrant Article Thirty Four brings this story to light. It's all about helping our neighbors through their challenges, especially following the pandemic. It is a moral statement about how we choose to live together. Our nation and our community have dramatic and growing disparities between those with great wealth and those with little wealth. These disparities have been exacerbated during the pandemic and over the last decades. Warrant Article Thirty Four asks that those with significant wealth consider contributing additional tax dollars so that families with little wealth can receive goods and services that they need to live more dignified and less stressful lives, like food, improved housing, and internet service, social workers to help and support our most vulnerable children and families. So many of our wealthiest neighbors are already incredibly philanthropic, contributing to causes that reflect their values. We are asking that one of their causes be the well-being of the community where they live. Oliver Wendell Holmes Jr. said, "Taxes are the price we pay for civilization." Margaret Mead says, "Civilization starts when we are helping our neighbors through their difficulties." I say, "Please support Article Thirty Four and give our most fortunate neighbors an opportunity every year to engage in a local mitzvah." Thank you.
Mr. Van Skoyek. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, John Van Skoyek from the Select Board. Article Thirty Four is a petition resolution that asks the Select Board to adopt a payment in addition to tax piatt, P-I-A-T-T, program, which will encourage households and businesses to make voluntary contributions of one percent of net worth above ten million dollars. The Select Board would also create a committee to develop rules and regulations for the dispersment of funds received. The Board overall was supportive of efforts to acquire additional funds for the benefit of the town. General support was made for any efforts to incorporate a wealth tax. Yet, some members of the Board were concerned with what impact voluntary contributions may have on community decisions or the influence that those who donated may wield. The Board wanted to make sure that donations were not made with any strings attached, and the committee formed will assist with promulgating rules and preventing their concerns. The Board voted favorable action on the Advisory Committee's motion. I do want to point out, as noted in the combined reports, this was an unusual situation in which one member of the Board was absent. Four of us voted, Bernard Green and I voted yes. Raul Fernandez voted no, and Heather Hamilton abstained.
You know what I'm going to allow, even though it's not opposed, I'm going to allow a couple of more speakers. So, in a few minutes. Mr. Spritz.
Hello, Nathan Spritz, Precinct Sixteen Town Meeting Member. Could you please show my slides? Thank you. I'm going to begin with a confession. I don't much like the idea of a voluntary contribution system based on wealth. I would have much preferred a straight-up wealth tax, but for a large number of reasons, it's just not feasible to create a new form of a tax at the local level in the town of Massachusetts. I'm going to present a perspective on a wealth tax as essentially a long overdue catch-up of taxes that we should have been collecting at the federal level for decades. I'll only touch upon the perverse effects of federal economic and tax policy, which shields our highest earners from having to pay a fair share and has facilitated obscene levels of income and wealth disparity in our country. And I'll conclude by connecting the impacts of federal policies on Brookline and our housing market. Please stay with me for just a few minutes as I take you through this. Next slide, please. This is a time series of our highest marginal tax rates in the U.S. since nineteen twenty-nine, in blue, and our federal deficit divided by surplus, the percentage of deficit as a percentage of surplus in orange. The marginal tax rate scales on the left, and the scale for the deficit as a percentage of GDP is on the right. Please note that our marginal tax rate scale goes all the way up to a hundred percent because our top rate hit ninety-one percent in the nineteen fifties. Since then, it has dropped and dropped until we reformed our tax system in nineteen eighty-six and has been a narrow range we know today ever since. Historically, deficits were caused by depressions and wars, but now they're caused by low tax revenue. Instead of a time series, which helps us orient over the last ninety years, we can look at deficits as a function of tax rates on the next slide. Next slide, please. Here, the story is easy to see. Each box is a themed-related deficit broken into errors by the top marginal tax rate. The light-colored boxes on the right show the U.S. trying to bring revenue equal to spending in enough levels to offset the challenges of war and economic conditions. However, you can see the deficits in the blue box on the left are different. These occurred during benign economic conditions, and those deficits were caused purely and simply by undertaxation. One part of a constellation of policies designed to help concentrate income and wealth in the hands of a small number of lucky Americans. Next slide, please. Income concentration and wealth concentration did not have to align so well, but by design they do. Since the Tax Reform Act of nineteen eighty-six, the top one percent of earners have garnered a greater share of national income since the Depression. On the right, you can see how the wealth for the top ten percent grew exponentially in the fifteen years leading up to the financial meltdown of two thousand eight. The bottom fifty percent of households accumulated little wealth at all. Next slide, please. Meanwhile, our deficits grew in that period, building up a big national debt, and guess who benefits from that debt? The very people who became wealthy under our less-than-sufficiently progressive tax system. They grew their wealth and lent their money back to Uncle Sam. Instead of paying for current period services, we borrowed instead of distributing.
Sorry, Mr. Spritz, could you please finish up? It's been three minutes.
I thought you gave me four minutes.
Well, you know, go for it. What the heck?
We paid the wealthiest interest because we did not tax them enough. Everyday W-2 earners are paying taxes to pay the interest of the top one percent for the privilege of keeping the top marginal tax rates low. Next slide, please. No time to go over these observations in detail, but please read while I connect this to Brookline. With wealth and income accumulating rapidly, the top housing prices in desirable communities skyrocket. When a healthy percentage of those of us who are buying houses, working, and paying mortgages are now in the top ten percent of income or even higher, we are driving up our costs in the local economy and distorting our tax base. Our home prices are the direct result of federal tax policy, and we should recognize that the wealthy and highly paid among us benefit. Those currently employed can afford this, but those on a fixed incomes may struggle. The funny thing is, our seniors may be richer on paper, but their homes are illiquid and cannot be used to pay taxes to pay for current services. Last slide, please. The growing wealth gap just shows that we have undertaxed our highest earners for decades. The wealth tax is just a catch-up of the taxes that we should have collected years earlier. In Brookline, our primary tax base is but one component of both the values of our real estate. It's a wealth tax, but by broadening our base to include the value of financial instruments, mostly stocks and bonds, we could assess voluntary contribution from a more liquid tax base. Article Thirty Four is a small step in revenue generation with a quantum leap in tax philosophy to fix what we know is broken. Please vote favorable action on Article Thirty Four.
Okay, with question's been called, we will take the vote. Two-thirds majority needed. Oh, God. I apologize, Ms. Gilman, Bob Miller, Ms. Pelkey, Ms. Brown, and Mr. Margolis are in the queue. Now we will vote. Ms. McNally?
McNally, Precinct Two, yes.
The motion passes with one hundred and fifty-four yes, fifty-two no, eleven abstentions. We will now take a vote on the resolution to urge the Select Board to adopt a payment in addition to tax program. It needs a majority vote to pass. Ms. McNally?
McNally, yes.
Okay, the motion passes, one hundred and eighty-two yes, twenty-one no, sixteen abstentions. We now turn to Article Thirty Five. Okay, there is a main motion and a referral motion. The main motion is a resolution to adopt measures to encourage access to voting in Brookline. It is moved by Mr. Ischak, seconded by Ms. Silbaugh. There is a referral motion offered to a Select Board Committee offered by Mr. Sandman and Mr. Green. That is found on page thirty-five-seven of your combined materials. I first call on Ms. Silbaugh.
Kate Silbaugh, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One, I have slides. So I'm just going to explain, going through these slides, what they are, what the motion is. It's a a resolution, if we could move forward one, to increase voting. And this is the problem it's addressing. This is where we ranked in voter turnout in Brookline among registered voters in the presidential election in two thousand twenty, which is to say we ranked towards the bottom in the state. Some people might hypothesize that's because we have a greater proportion of non-citizens, but that's registered voters. Can we move forward a slide? Some might hypothesize that it's because we have more kind of voters on the roll who've moved out, but I'm not sure why that would be a greater number than, say, Cambridge or Somerville have. And as you can see, when we compare us to other municipal election turnouts, we aren't the worst, but we're pretty close to the worst, or we're second to worst or so. Can we move forward, please? And we have a hypothesis, but we don't know this, which is why we're asking for study. The hypothesis is that that's because renters voted a lower rate than owners. And in Brookline, we have a high rate of renters, relatively high rate of renters, and we think that might explain it, but we don't know. Can we please move forward a slide? So the heart of this resolution is just that the town, is for us as town meeting, to say that the town's committed to making it as easy as possible for eligible residents to vote by thinking about novel means of increasing access. Can we please move forward? And here are the ways that the resolution encourages the town to do this. The first is to put mail-in voter registration forms in public buildings, police stations, schools, public housing, libraries, and fire stations. For example, move forward, please. And then also to include mail-in voter registration forms with the annual town census. Forward, please. And then also to put in absentee ballot applications that have scanned stamps on them in those same public buildings. Now, this would not cost us for the stamps unless someone actually applies for an absentee ballot and mails it in. Forward, please. And then we would like the town to ensure that it has ample multilingual materials at voter registration sites and online and at polling stations by April two thousand twenty-two, and the town clerk can decide which are the important languages for our population. Please move forward. And we'd also like the town of Brookline to send nonpartisan robocalls and to use social media to remind voters to cast ballots on Election Day beginning in May two thousand twenty-two.
You have fifteen seconds.
Yep. And then we want the town to conduct a geospatial voter registration voter patterns to study defined areas where voter registration and voter turnout is low and groups are underrepresented, and to produce a set recommendations to increase voter participation. Now, this kind of study, as I like to say.
Please finish up.
It's so easy that it's the kind of thing people do in Brookline to win arguments on Facebook. Forward to the end here. This is our guidance to the town administration, including the newly-elected town clerk, as to our goals, visions, and goals for proactive approach to voter access. Please vote no on referral and yes on resolution warrant article.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call on Mr. Bernbaum, who has five minutes. I want to comment that I've been extremely permissive in letting people go over their time limits. So please adhere to the ones that I set, Mr. Bernbaum. And I'm not talking about you in particular, just saying. Five minutes, please.
That's okay. You can talk about me in particular. Good evening, Madam Moderator, and all, and my deepest sympathies to those of you who, like me, are headed for your third straight night of being up past bedtime. Article Thirty Five is a resolution that calls on the office of the town clerk to take six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who are you? I apologize.
Forgive me, Ben Bernbaum, Advisory Committee at Large. Calls on the town clerk's office to make, to take six particular actions to improve voter participation. These are listed in the reports and have just been voiced. Voting's an important business, and the Advisory Committee is grateful to the petitioners for bringing these ideas forward and has voiced the hope that many of these actions, if possible and if feasible, would be adopted by the town clerk's office. The committee, however, found deliberation, following deliberation, voted eighteen-five with two abstentions to engender a broader and deeper look at voting issues by referring Thirty Five to a Select Board's committee that would study what stands in the way of more robust participation in voting and to recommend actions that would make Brookline an exemplary voting community and report on these matters at the two thousand twenty-two annual town meeting. What issues might the committee look at? Well, you've heard some of them, as always. There are the needs of the disadvantage and the old. A second issue is the dramatically high percent of renters. We don't know what effect that has in particular, but we should find out. I will note that fifty-one percent of Brookline's residents are renters compared with twenty-eight percent in neighboring Newton. Let's see. The, right now, we don't seem to be an exemplary voting community, but we're okay. A B-plus student in most circumstances, but there's much room for improvement. For example, sixty-sixth percent of potential Brookline voters are registered to vote. The state average is fifty-seven percent. So we're good by comparison, but we could do better, I'm sure, two-thirds. Maybe lowballing it for Brookline. Second, our percent of registered voters who came out for the last four national elections is absolutely average for the state. Beginning in two thousand fourteen with forty-nine percent for Brookline, fifty-one for the state, and then seventy-six Brookline, seventy-five state, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy-seven, seventy-six. Should we be average? How could we improve that performance? As regards the local elections, we don't do well when compared with Arlington, Belmont, and Wellesley, three towns I looked at because they're sort of like Brookline. But none of these communities covers itself in local election glory, and the sad numbers are in the book. Local politics is just that way, but we should know the reasons that apply to Brookline and whether they can be ameliorated and how. Some fixes, it's important to note, will relate to issues that don't come under the responsibility of the town clerk's office. One example is the role of town meeting members in promoting local elections. And that kind of thing is yet another reason to form a Select Boards Committee with broad responsibility. And speaking of the town clerk's office, I'll say about Mr. Kaufman that the top item on his election flyer was equitable and accessible elections, and I've talked to him recently. And remarkably, he said the same thing even after being elected. He is, in fact, eager to move on most of the proposals offered by the petitioners as well as others. So we envisioned the work would go on while the committee work went on.
You have ten seconds.
Kind of activist approach alongside a deeper approach is a win-win for Brookline. And so by a vote of eighteen-five. And so by a vote of 18-5 with two abstentions, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on a referral of Article 35 to a select board committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ischak, you have three minutes.
I apologize, Madam Moderator. I think my comments actually are a little bit longer. Anthony Ischak, resident of the town of Brookline. So the political community exists for the common good and should be represented by as many of the residents as possible. We have a chronic turnout problem, as previously mentioned by my co-petitioner. We are frequently lower than comparable local municipalities and towns in the federal election. To the extent that we can reduce barriers and make voting more convenient, we should take that opportunity. This warrant article is prepared in discussions with the VHA and town clerk's office via email. VHA reported having an insufficient supply of voter registration cards last year and supports this warrant article. Town clerk's office felt that increasing outreach via social media and access to forums, various public-facing town sites, was immediately achievable. I also spoke with our new town clerk last week, and he also emphasized his goals of improving registration and turnout rates. Currently, our voter materials are limited to our three libraries and town hall along with post offices, of course, which leaves many of our precincts lacking in access to these materials. Expanding to town buildings, as per our proposal, can potentially increase turnout by approximately 2% as per a study by the Brennan Center. Including voter registration, possibly a calendar of elections with an annual census is another low-effort, high-yield intervention, since this goes directly to the residents' hands and would help to capture new residents. Our town has a geographical mobility rate of 21%. This initiative can help this demographic. Text message reminders have also been shown to increase turnout in municipal elections, particularly among low propensity voters and those under 30 years of age. Making material available in various languages can also help, as we have a 29% foreign-born population, which is one and a half times either Boston or Cambridge's proportion. We defer, of course, to the town clerk to select the appropriate common languages after English for the material. Our article also seeks to not only identify local barriers to voting that might be in our blind spots through a geospatial study and identifying potential solutions, but also the report of a scientific study is needed and to accomplish those same goals. This was as per recommendation by the subcommittee, which we took to help strengthen our proposal. We need to find out barriers as identified by our residents, not as we see them. The geospatial study would be minimal in time and resources for the town clerk or town IT department. If their employees don't have the bandwidth, the study can be funded so that the town clerk's office can utilize graduate students or research assistants at an approximated one-time cost of $3,000 to $4,000, which is a negligible cost of the current $200,000 budget per year for mailing warrant articles. Again, this one-time study would cost 1% to 2% of mailing warrant articles for one year. For the geospatial study and voting analysis, the deadline of January 22 was chosen to allow for possible implementation for not only the 2022 town election, but next year we also have a governor's election.
15 seconds.
This warrant article also seeks to give more of a residence a voice in the government that directly impacts their day-to-day lives and shapes issues of housing, schooling, local judicial landscape, among other things. Maintaining accessibility to voting and participating is part of social justice and can help a town meeting that is more reflective of the populace. This also helps expand our vision to find solutions to the problems in our town with a more representative local government. Given that this warrant article includes a study, there is no need for referral, and we ask that you vote favorable action on warrant article 35 as written, which would help to immediately address some of our voting issues with the urgency they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Green, you are up now. And my assistant moderator had an existential question for you, which is that it is noted on page 35-5 of the materials that Chair Hamilton both voted on the issue and abstained. And we are wondering if you have an answer for that, but that's pretty rhetorical. You can just launch into your speech.
My recollection is that she abstained on that vote. She's here, so she can answer.
That's I'm teasing, that's all right.
Okay, I took you seriously.
Moderator humor.
Okay. Select board member lack of humor. Okay, Bernard Green, a member of the select board for warrant article 35. Article 35 is a petitioned resolution that asks the town clerk to promote voting by providing greater access to mail-in voting registration forms. It also asks that absentee ballot applications with stamped envelopes be provided at all town buildings regularly accessed by the public. And it asks the town clerk to commence a geospatial survey data regarding voting patterns and that the town clerk issue a report and recommendations. Now, geospatial analysis involves using GIS software to overlay two or more forms of mapped information. In this case, the simplest geospatial vote analysis would overlay a map of the town, the map of registered voters by residential location. Let me just add, this may require more study in the minds of many residents of this town. The board was unanimous in supporting the intentions of the warrant article, but questioned whether the measures were overly prescriptive, given the absence of a town clerk at that time to assist with the details of actually carrying out such a proposal. Now, we have a town clerk, but, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to work with the town clerk on, you know, some of these details. The board also noted that registering to vote is different from actually voting and questioned if there were other efforts that may be more fruitful. The use of geospatial analysis raises additional questions. Therefore, a majority of the board supported the advisory committee's motion to refer this article to a select board committee for study with a report to be made at the 2022 annual town meeting. That vote was a vote of three to one to one, one abstention. And the select board by that vote voted favorable action on the motion offered by the advisory committee. Thank you. I'm finished.
Ms. McNally, we're ready for your vote.
Yes. McNally, precinct two, yes.
Okay, the motion to call the question passes with a vote of 122 yes, 35 no, 13 abstentions. I do not understand the points of order. Could people hear me? Call the vote. No. All right. I agree, we will revote. Am I unmuted? Yeah, we're gonna take a revote on the question to call the quest revote on whether or not to terminate debate because my microphone was muted for part of the time, not making it clear when the vote should begin. Okay, the queue again is James Franco, Deborah Brown, Chi Chi Wu, John Van Schoyek, Kathleen Gavell, Michael Burstein, Ms. or Mr. Doldren, Ms. Neufind, and Mr. Lessig. We will now vote. Ms. McNally?
McNally, precinct two, yes.
Okay, the motion passes with 158 yes, 55 no, eight abstentions. We are now going to vote on the motion to refer. And the motion is to refer the main resolution to a select board committee. Majority vote is needed. Start now. Ms. McNally?
McNally, yes.
Okay. There is, the motion to refer was voted down. We will now vote on the main motion. Ms. McNally?
McNally, yes.
Okay, the motion passes 185 yes, 18 no, 15 abstentions. I now turn the I beg your pardon? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The failed referral motion was 105 yes, 113 no. How many abstentions do you recall? Five abstentions. But again, the motion itself passes by a vote of 185 yes, 18 no, and 15 abstentions. I now turn the podium over to my assistant moderator, because I am conflicted out again. It is a
Good evening. We turn to Article 36. The main motion on Article 36 is found on page, excuse me, 36-12. It's to refer to a moderators committee, the review and to report on implementation of BFAC recommendations from some months ago. Moved by Mr. Toffel, seconded by Mr. Sandman. There is, as usual, a correction of the form of vote on page 16-12. The lead sentence should read, voted that the town adopt the following resolution. And also in the fourth whereas clause, the second line, there there's a reference to PSB. For purposes of the motion, you should insert after the initials PSB in brackets, Public Schools of Brookline. I call on let me just comment on on the forms of vote that we've been enduring during this town meeting. Many, many of them have required the kind of surgery that the moderator and I have had to put you through. And I would ask that petitioners, and in particularly the advisory committee for, which is a committee that I have the deepest respect and admiration for. Half of your, fully half of your motions had to be had to go undergo the same type of surgery. So I'd ask you to be very little more careful about that in your future reports. Mr. Toffel?
Thank you, I believe I have five minutes, is that correct, Mr. Assistant Moderator?
You do?
Very good, thank you so much. Mike Toffel, precinct eight, town meeting member. I'm one of the petitioners of Article 36 and previously a member of the Brookline Fiscal Advisory Committee, or BFAC. My co-petitioners include town meeting members Nicole McClellan, Orion Abrega, David Pearlman, Paul Sainer, Arthur Siegel, Nathan Spritz, and former select board member Ben Franco. In 2019, the select board created the Brookline Fiscal Advisory Committee to study the town's structural deficit problem. The structural deficit simply means that the town's expenses are projected to rise faster than our revenues by several million dollars more each year. Here's what the structural deficit looked like a year ago from the BFAC report. Next slide, please. The structural deficit was forecasted to increase by millions each year, up to $27 million, five years out. But because Brookline cannot actually run a deficit, these projections should make you wonder, what's the plan to raise funds or cut expenses to balance our budget? That was a key aspect of BFAC's charge, and our February 2020 report issued 35 recommendations and sub-recommendations intending to be seriously discussed by a number of public bodies. Next slide, please. The next slide shows the some of the categories of our of our recommendations and to whom those recommendations were issued. Nearly a year and a half later, many and perhaps most of the BFAC recommendations have not even been seriously discussed. Here are some examples of what's not been seriously discussed. On the revenue side, BFAC urged the town to seek new revenues by reviewing our payments in lieu of taxes program or pilots we receive from nonprofits. Also, we encouraged having a strategic discussion about overrides so they don't keep arising to the surprise of town meeting and the public. And also to review the town school partnerships revenue allocation formula to ensure it best meets the needs of the schools and town. On the expense side, BFAC recommended that the town improve its capital planning process, including publishing periodic reviews of our buildings, streets, and other assets to help us better forecast their capital maintenance needs. And BFAC also recommended that the town take a more careful look at what programs should be scaled back to allow others to grow. What's worrisome to me is that none of these recommendations are extraordinary. They simply reflect good management practices for an organization with a $350 million budget, a changing financial landscape, and a future that we town meeting members are responsible for planning and safeguarding. And yet, these recommendations, for the most part, have not been seriously debated, and things aren't getting better. In fact, things are getting worse. Let me show you again on the next slide, please. The five-year projected structural deficit on the left in the BFAC report. Now, a year later on the right, we can compare it to the latest five-year projection in the current budget book. Note that the numbers of our deficit are only growing. BFAC also analyzed our town's credit rating and found that our AAA rating is more vulnerable than many of us thought. Here's a chart that shows the components of our AAA rating. Next slide, please. Note how all the components that we actually manage are, in fact, less than AAA. Our finances, our debt levels, and our management are all double A or even single A. And while some celebrated the news that we recently retained our AAA bond rating, take a look at the details. Next slide, please. In fact, three elements have worsened and none have improved. Let me conclude by summarizing what Let me conclude by summarizing what this article does and what it does not do. Next slide, please. It simply calls for a moderator committee to gather information from these public bodies in order to issue three progress reports over the next year and a half to inform Town Meeting on what progress has been made in deliberating and acting on these recommendations. It relies on volunteer labor and costs the town nothing. It's meant to encourage our leaders to have those difficult conversations, because we all know that failure to do so doesn't make the problems go away. It only makes the problems harder to solve. The point of this article is to shine light on progress, and when there's a lack of progress, to motivate our public bodies to seriously discuss these recommendations. I've heard a few express concern that this article sets a dangerous precedent of one committee overseeing others. But this moderator committee would issue, would simply issue reports, not oversee the work of our public bodies. It has no decision-making authority. If you serve on a public body and are proud of the progress and your ability to take on these vital issues, well, I think you should welcome that that progress be independently reported. I certainly would. Town Meeting needs this information to help us do our jobs as the stewards of our town. Finally, some have said that a year and a half is too soon to begin reporting progress because COVID distracted our public bodies. I'm not convinced. If you've been to the meetings of these public bodies, I'm sure you, like I, have seen they dedicate plenty of time to other things that are less important than figuring out where our town is going to find revenues to fund the many things we want, including investing in affordable housing and perhaps a municipal pool. In closing, I believe our long debate about Lawrence Historic District was driven in part by our town's failure to have a comprehensive discussion about preservation and density. We need to encourage conversations on these long-term difficult problems, and I think Article 36 is a step in that direction. Please vote favorable action on Article 36. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Scoyeck. Well, other speakers have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, John Van Scoyeck, from the Select Board. Our Article 36 is a petition resolution asking Town Meeting to direct the moderator to appoint a committee to discuss and document progress made concerning BFAC recommendations made as part of their final report delivered on February 2020. The committee would be tasked with delivering three reports on progress or decisions made concerning BFAC recommendations made via a public presentation. The board wishes to highlight that several BFAC recommendations have already been implemented, and that should not be lost as part of the discussion concerning this article. Some board members believe that a moderators committee overseeing the work of a Select Board Committee does not make sense, since the board created BFAC, not Town Meeting. While the board acknowledged the need for greater accountability and that there is great interest in the BFAC recommendations, they were concerned about the precedence of establishing a committee to shadow the work of other commission committees' work, as well as language that requires these reports to be delivered right before Town Meeting. The board voted no action on the motion offered by the petitioner. I want to add a couple of words of my own, if that's all right. This is a very, very well-intentioned proposal. However, I think behind it there lies a fundamental misunderstanding of the difference between the responsibilities of an elected body, such as the Select Board, and the responsibilities of an appointed body, such as BFAC. Being an appointed body does not confer upon that body the status of being able to dictate that every one of their recommendations be followed by the elected body. The only one of those two bodies that is directly responsible to voters via elections, otherwise known as democracy, is the elected body. The elected body has to balance the recommendations of this appointed body with the needs and concerns of the entire town, has to prioritize, has to weigh each recommendation as to its value and its immediacy, and has to make decisions and take responsibility for those decisions that, when the next election rolls around. So I would beseech the BFAC and any other appointed body to please regard that difference and think about it, and perhaps temper their expectations that just because they have been honored with an appointment to a committee does not mean that everything they recommend, that everything they recommend, excuse me, is cast in stone and deserving of absolute obedience and immediate implementation. And I think the fact that we have this odd business of one committee set up to shadow another is indicative of how this, this particular proposal disregards the fundamental difference between elected bodies and appointed bodies. Thank you.
Mr. Sandman? Thank you, Mr. Van Scoyeck.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Sandman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and Advisory Committee Chair, speaking for the Advisory Committee. By a vote of 10 to 6 with 8 abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article 36. This article is intended to call renewed attention to the 18 recommendations made by the Brookline Fiscal Advisory Committee, BFAC, in February 2020 by seeking status reports on the progress or lack thereof made by the committees and boards to which the recommendations were addressed. The status reports would be sought by a moderators committee. BFAC was created by the Select Board at the urging of the Advisory Committee as a way to look at how boards and committees discharge their long-term financial management responsibilities. BFAC made 18 specific recommendations, which by and large the Advisory Committee endorses, for changes in the way several public bodies function and how they interact, including the Select Board, the Advisory Committee, the School Committee, and the boards and committees whose work impacts economic development. The thrust of the recommendations was to improve the management of Brookline's finances with the objective of closing the long-term budget gap BFAC projected, a gap that all of us familiar with town finances recognize. The Advisory Committee realizes that the recommendations were largely pushed aside during the pandemic, but 18 months have elapsed since BFAC's report, and it's reasonable to ask for status reports as a means of re-energizing interest in the report. Like the Select Board, some Advisory Committee members had doubts that asking for status reports by a moderators committee was the best mechanism for encouraging implementation. But we definitely agree there's a need to bring BFAC's recommendations back to the front burner, and the proposed moderators committee would be a reporting body, not an implementation body. Thus, by a vote of 10 to 6 with 8 abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article 36. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bernbaum, not going to take the motion for the question right now. Mr. Bernbaum?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Well, we all know BFAC was formed...
Who are you?
Oh, Ben Bernbaum. I'm sorry, I'm so unused to speaking on this floor. Ben Bernbaum, Advisory Committee at Large. The BFAC, as we know, was formed by the Select Board and the Council of the Advisory Committee because a structural deficit had been identified. And structural deficit is a cancer diagnosis. You do not ignore it. So what you do if you're a private company is you bring in Pricewaterhouse or some other, some other organization where a partner's hour is going to cost you a couple of thousand bucks, and a secretary's hour will cost you $2.50, and you pay because you need to get the smartest, freshest people in the room and get it right. Thirteen people were named to BFAC. Their, they are, their resumes are quite impressive. I will not go through even, even a short description. They spent a year and a month on the work, at least 100 meetings for each of them, according to one member's estimate. So if we paid them 500 bucks an hour, which would be a steal, that's a $650,000 investment, not to mention the salaries paid to town employees who assisted and other town volunteers. Under what circumstances do you pay that kind of money and then put the product on a shelf? I personally find the BFAC document impressive. It's knowledgeable, it's clear, and it is truly careful. It dances around some dangerous ground. McKinsey could have done it for $2 million. That said, I don't agree with all the conclusions, and neither do many of you in, in Town Meeting, I'm guessing. Still, that doesn't excuse our leaving it to rust next to the road. If you want to, if we want to take our volunteers seriously, and if we want our volunteers to take us seriously, and especially if you want to take the prospects of a foundational deficit seriously, we need to get this machine up and moving and use it the way it profits us to use it. If it's 10 recommendations that we adopt, that's fine. If it's 15, if it's five that we have the stomach for, so be it. But letting it stand at this point, letting it stand is just not a good answer. In the end, of course, it's our machine, and it's ours to remodel or even blow up. But we need to be honest about what we're doing. And as someone who doesn't vote in this body, I ask those of you who do vote to vote in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Doldren. You're on, Mr. Doldren.
Apologies, Mr. Moderator, I'm not speaking on this warrant article.
I'm sorry, I was told you were. Ms. Brown?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I was not a part of the BFAC committee, and there were times when I had real issues with, with some of the BFAC recommendations. But that doesn't change the basic fact that they got it right. You know? We, we as a town are only as strong as our planning and financial management. And, and Brookline, from everything that I can tell, is weak on strategic planning. And, and BFAC, which is largely operational, has done an outstanding job of making that clear. You know, we have a $350 million budget, but we don't have a strategic plan. We don't have an up-to-date strategic plan. If I walked, if, if I asked everybody in the room, what are this town's government? What is this town government's strategic priorities? What would you tell me? Would we all be on the same page? I dare say we wouldn't be. And the fact that we're not says loads, because what that means then is we're going to have a hard time setting priorities. It means that we're going to have a hard time creating goals under these priorities, developing measurements, and even figuring out what projects are important and who owns them. We spent part of last night arguing about how we're going to manage data. You know, there ought to be a system for that. And how did we get here? If you go back to these BFAC recommendations, if you go back to last town meeting, we spent a considerable amount of time discussing the town-school partnership. If you go back to the BFAC report, I think it refers to the town-school partnership at least three times. If nothing else, that means it should percolate to the top for somebody. Lastly, I want to point out that the BFAC recommendations make a point of saying, and I quote, "Encourage Select Board Members to Lead by Example in Establishing Improved Financial Decision Making." And, and it also talks about clarifying positions of financial responsibility and authority.
There's 30 seconds.
Thank you. It's critical that we do this for the well-being of this town, because if we are unwilling to set these kind of basic benchmarks, guideposts, then we will see our overall quality as a community decline. So I would encourage all of you to vote in favor of the BFAC recommendations. Thank you very much.
Well, the BFAC recommendations aren't before us. The creation of a moderators committee to discuss and review and report on their implementation is what's before us. I'm going to take a couple of questions and then the motion for the question. Mr. Levy?
Hi, I'm Mark Levy, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 7. I think I heard in Mr. Van Scoyeck's remarks, a couple of issues that I would like to take issue with. Basically, the moderators committee being opposed is not there to tell the Select Board what to do. It's to report to the Town Meeting and to the town in general of how they're doing so far. To have a recommended, set of recommendation in front of you, it makes sense, as on any journey, to have mileposts along the way, so you know how far you've traveled and whether you're on the right course. Some of the BFAC recommendations, if people, if they're gotten implemented, will be greeted by a tremendous yawn from the, the town and Town Meeting. Others will be greeted by a seral grief and soothe the atem if they're progressing a pace, and others will cause some concern if they're lagging. Clearly, this point, this last year or so has been a tough year, and I don't think anybody, including the BFAC, may ever imagine that all those recommendations would be put into effect within the course of one year or 18 months. But it's important information for all of us, including the Select Board, to have gathered together a report on where are we moving ahead, where are we not? How were those decisions affected by the COVID pandemic, if at all? Is there a need for letting some fires under some folks? Or is it simply a matter of we need to give more support to some folks so that they can get going on the implementation at a reasonable pace? So I certainly support this article, and I think that the idea of having the moderators committee do the report, like interviewing people from the town departments, is the most sense I've heard in a long time on this issue, and there's certainly the world alternative before us. So if we want to report, I suggest we support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Obriga. Then I'll take the motion for the question.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I wanted to address the comments made by select woman, John Van Scoyeck. I would like to point out that, as, as our colleague Ben Bernbaum pointed out a moment ago, that the expertise on, on the BFAC committee is really blue-ribbon world-class. And we do the town a disservice when we do not acknowledge and respect the work of our volunteers. Sorry. And so for these reasons, I would like Town Meeting to acknowledge and respect the work of extreme volunteerism that went into the BFAC report, and vote favorable action on this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two speakers who signed up in advance, Mr. Hoy and Mr. Spritz. I have in the queue Ms. Gilman, Mr. Green, Mr. Richmond, and Mr. Rosenthal. We'll take a vote on whether to terminate debate whenever you're ready. All right, the voting period has commenced. Voting period has elapsed. Ms. McNally?
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Can I have the count, please? I'm sorry. Motion to terminate debate carries by a vote of 133 in favor, 68 opposed, and nine abstentions. On the main motion on page 36-12, we'll take a vote on the appointment of a moderators committee. Voting period has commenced. Time's up. Ms. McNally.
McNally, yes.
Can I have the count, please? Motion carries by a vote of 176 in favor, 27 opposed, and 12 abstentions. Thank you. Madam Moderator, you're on.
Am I on? Is Gorfine? What is your point? What is your point of order?
Thank you, Shawna Giora Gorfine, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11. Madam Moderator, I'm just asking for some clarity as to what we're going on now. I understand that earlier we voted to hear warrant articles 38 and 39.
Exactly what I was about to address.
Terrific.
All right, so this is where we are. It's 10:02. We have remaining on our schedule the following things, and this is just for Town Meeting altogether. We have motions 38 and 39, which are motions to adopt resolutions for affordable housing studies on Fisher Hill and on the Babcock Parking Lot. As of now, we have moved to vote those. Okay, here's the situation we face. On Zoom, we can only have a total of 25 votes, and 25 votes that are recorded. Some of you may now regret having made those motions to call the question, because it means that we have to adjourn, because we only have three slots left. This means that if there were any calls for motions to call the debate, we could not hear the three articles or the two articles that are left. So we are in a bind in that we are and then we couldn't adjourn. We'd be here forever. Since I have to have a vote on whether or not to adjourn, that takes up one of our slots, and unfortunately, we cannot continue. We need to move to adjourn, and we will see you Monday night. Mr. Gashak, what is your question of privilege?
Sorry, Madam Moderator. Dave Gashak, Precinct 13. That was a privileged motion to adjourn to a fixed time of Monday, June 7th, 7:00 p.m.
Wait, I grant that, especially because it's what we were going to do anyway. So I will take in addition to, I'll take, I'm going to take that as a motion to adjourn, although oddly brought to the table. I'll take a second, and then we will vote on whether or not to adjourn. Does someone second it? Moved and seconded. All right, we will now vote on whether to adjourn until a fixed time Monday at 7:00. Are we done? Ms. McNally.
McNally, yes.
The motion passes with 186 yes, 16 no, and six abstentions, and no, we're adjourned. See you Monday at 7:00.